At 6:05, 2.0, adjustments to the agenda. I'm sorry, our ETN, were you ready? I'm really sorry. We need to add an executive session for the purpose of personnel. We're going to do that at the beginning of the meeting. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? Okay. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
She moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay. All right, we're back. Thank you for your patience. 3.0, audience and communications. The purpose of this segment of the agenda is to provide for public comments. This is your opportunity to address us on matters before the board at the meeting or in matters not on the agenda. Is there any audience and communication? All right, well, it's been our habit during budget meetings to allow quite a bit of audience participation. So when we get to our work session, you know, you're welcome to ask questions. We just ask that you try to address your questions and comments at the board instead of any back and forth between each other. And remember, we're all here because we care about the school and this community and to just try to be very respectful. All right. 4.0, discussion matters. 4.1, bond vote discussion. And is this you, Mark?
Sure. It can be.
Or I don't know who it is.
I can at least start it.
Okay.
This is something that's been discussed a couple of times among the board. There are some things we believe are urgent concerns as far as maintenance is concerned with the school. They include roofs over the art atrium, the 1969, the gymnasium roof, the 1996 wing. There's a concern about the elevator that's in the school. And finally, some lighting in the 1969 wing. Altogether, the projects that we have listed total about $409,000, which would probably, not probably, what we're discussing is putting it up as a bond issue instead of putting it through as a facility and maintenance budget, one-year item. That's sort of the groundwork we can discuss from there, I suppose.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
I was going to ask you to, no, let's touch on one of the prior meetings, which is to go in a little bit more depth on the elevator. I know there are other parts of the building, I think we were told that we were starting from scratch, they wouldn't be up to code now, but they're sort of grandfathered in.
Mm-hmm.
Is the elevator different from that?
Well, so the elevator was put in, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, was put in as part of the 1996 renovation. It was an old-style elevator when they put it in. Maintenance has become an issue with it. They can't get parts for it. It currently works. That's, let's put that out there. It currently works. It is, it is a required part of the building. If somebody needs that elevator, it has to be there under ADA requirements. So that's one issue, the ADA. That's, other issues is, yeah, the elevator, if we were to go to a full compliance, we are grandfathering for the elevator for certain requirements. We would have to go for what's called a variance. New elevators have to be large enough to put in a stretcher, fully stretched out, I mean, they're big. We don't have to go that far. We would be replacing the car that's in the shaft with a newer model, is what it basically boils down to.
And so, so that price is for, totally up to current standards?
Up to, not including the size, where we'd get a variance for that size. If we had to bust out the shaft, that's, would be significantly more money. In fact, I'm not even sure you could fit it in the current footprint, but...
You're talking about just replacing the car? What about the electronics?
The electronic, that's, yeah. So pretty much, we'd use the existing physical shaft and then everything comes out and put in something new.
When's the last time it broke down?
Last year, right?
This year.
Oh, this year.
We had to repair it, I believe in August. So what's sort of like the typical manual repair bill for that?
I'm not so, I couldn't speak to that, Eric. What I do know, what David said, is that the gentleman who previously serviced the elevator said he wasn't comfortable doing so anymore due to the difficulty in getting parts. So that's one of the challenges. The architect did say, Audrey and I met with the architect yesterday, and there may have to be some modifications done to the hallway to make sure that there's a proper amount of clearance between the bottom of the car and the shaft. And she described what possibly could be done to the hallway, which would be fairly minimal. The hallway outside the shaft would come up one inch, and that would be feathered off on either side. And that is so that the car could come up one inch, and there would add an inch to the depth underneath the car and the bottom of the shaft. That is, again, a code issue. And the architect is still working with the elevator, an elevator vendor, to get more detail.
At what point does the state enter into this?
Well, Bob, can you speak to this? The guy who was working on the elevator was also technically a state inspector. But they, we would get to the state level going for a variance for the size of the elevator. But that's where they stepped in.
The point of my question is, we don't want to be in the middle of this and then find out, oh, by the way.
Right. So the variance would be something we would go for before we started doing anything.
Other board questions? Anyone in the audience have a question about this, the bond vote? The potential bond vote? And if you can just stand up and say your name for, since you're on TV.
I'm curious who the main contractor of the elevator is? The current elevator?
I couldn't tell you that.
Anyone else?
Just to the parts thing, is that, so we were able to fix it this year, but I mean, is it, I guess it's hard to get a sense for how acute that issue is.
And again, this came from Dave, right? The repairman or the maintenance contract we had with the previous fellow, he came to a point where he said getting parts was getting to be near impossible. And that was part of his issue with working on it to begin with.
So we got a new repairman, or?
We, so who's working on it now?
Well, nobody's working on it now.
Yeah.
But I know the architect is in communication with another vendor.
So there's another vendor on the way.
And I guess we have to weigh, if it does break down, we're in a real situation where then we have to, you know, scramble and try to get something. If we can't get a part, what do we do? And then at what, at that point, would the state step in and say, you have to do the whole thing?
I think that's the proper read on the letter. We haven't been notified that we aren't going to be able to get it back operational if we had a failure next month or the following month. But one of these times, we're going to, we're going to be out of luck like we were with a library elevator and not be able to bring it back up and then stalled until we address it.
So this one is how old?
1996, I believe.
And what's, what's sort of the useful life of the new elevator? Do we have any idea what that looks like?
Well, we'd have to get a number from the architect, but hopefully longer than 20 years.
And the model you're looking at is a contemporary thing?
Yeah, it, yes.
All right, any other questions on the bond? So I guess although we're not, I guess this will be up for an action item in January. I don't, yeah, go ahead.
I included the article, just so you had a, in the section, what it would look like if you approve it for a town meeting day.
Yeah, I saw it. I forgot, right?
And then Greg asked me what the home value or tax impact would be as we go for inclusion of this. It looks like it'd be about $26 a year per $400,000 home in the community of Charlotte to cover the burden from this article.
And how long, how long is the note?
I used 15 years, looking at the spread of projects that it's going to cover and not wanting the debt payments to go beyond some of the investments that you've made in the facility. So I use 15 years. If that's unreasonable or someone feels it should be different, we can modify that.
Okay. Thank you.
Some of these roofs, like the 96 roof? Have we been allocating maintenance dollars to that over time? Or is this just a product of lack of maintenance?
This is just a product of the age of the roof. Now, to answer your question, to my knowledge, there hasn't been any money put aside to replace, you know, to count on the replacement of the roof at a certain date.
No, I see, more like was money spent every year to replace a couple odd shingles or to keep the thing from falling to pieces?
So yes, on the art roof, and yes, on the gym roof. The art atrium roof and the gym roof have been patched a number of times, have been repaired every year that I've been here, and never repaired fully. This week, which we think we got it, and then another leak happens. And those are the roofs that have that rubber, basically bicycle tire kind of membrane down. And so those have been repaired every year. The 1996 wing asphalt shingled roof is just coming up on 18 years old, and we had to replace the other exposure of that roof, I guess it would be the southern exposure of that roof, a few years ago, combined with the building project, I believe. And that was created, that was leaking. Currently, the north side of the 96 shingled roof is not leaking, but we know the shingles are degrading and it's 18 years old.
Is there a design flaw that underlies these problems?
So we'd need Lee here to talk about that more fully. But as far as the art atrium roof part of it is concerned, where it meets the other roofs, he has described that as there is some flaw in the way it was put together, and part of the project would be to strip it back and correct that to some degree, to the best of our ability.
Yeah, we started out a year or so ago talking about a range of things that added up from somewhere around $6 million, and now we're down to 409. So I'm looking at the rest of what's here. What's next? For example, I'm hearing you mention the shingles around the chimney in the 39 building and that general area?
So, and as we've discussed, we, you're right, last year we talked about a larger project. There really didn't seem to be a lot of support for that, that considered what to do with the building we're sitting in. And we've had lots of discussions about this building, about whether it's repairable or whether it needs to be torn down. And as, again, as we've discussed, we're looking at a separate option, given the population of the school, is whether this building could be taken out of service instead of repairing it. And that would involve finding space in the existing structure of the school for the library and the cafeteria. And the architects have started to do that study and put something together.
And when are we going to hear about this?
Unclear. In the near future, but not in the next three months or four months or something.
Well, I think we need to hear about it sooner rather than later. Sooner being, while we're working on this budget, I mean, we can't go along $400,000 here and a half million there and add up to three or four million over the course of time unanticipated. If that's the reality of what it's going to be, we need to have that discussion slash debate and not leave these people hanging in terms of tax bills.
Well, I think there are two separate, partly two separate issues. The issues that we've described here are roofs that we believe are going to cause other maintenance issues as, so sort of weather tightness of the school. An elevator that is a code issue. And then going forward, the larger project you're discussing is more of a rehab. I'm not sure they necessarily go together right this second. Yes, I agree, they both cost money and they both need to be discussed, but what we're talking about in the next iteration of what we do with the 1939 building is smaller than what we've ever talked about.
And I wonder, too, if, if we did try to hurry something along, it still wouldn't be, if we're thinking we need, we want to bond this for, to align with town meeting day, I just don't see how, you know, totally adding this part of the building into that, we could get that done in time. Because I think we have to have everything ready to go by the third week of January. Well, is there, does it, are we good with leaving things like this? Or does it make sense to poll the board to see how people think that they will vote so that if we're going to go forward, we can be thinking about a plan for how we get this information out to the community?
So I guess my question would be, if the bond doesn't, if the bond fails, then how do we pay for all these things? You know, what's the?
Depends on what goes in the budget, I guess. If you get that, if we vote to put the 25 in as a sort of rainy day fund, then when the roof leaks?
Just the piece around the lighting and the first floor, that, that really needs to be done. We've had an electrician tell us that that, that can't wait. So...
That can't wait because?
Because fixtures are starting to fail. So, so that's something that we would need to find a way to pay for next year, bond, article or no article. And the, I suspect the 96 wing roof would...
Yeah, though, I mean, there are roofs that are actively leaking, or leaking, not actively, on occasion, you know. Specifically, we all know about the second floor near Mr. Barrett's classroom. And the gym had leaks that came down that wall, that far wall. And again, it's all patching, you know, it's one thing, we have done some floor replacement up in the fifth grade's classrooms. It's another thing if we're talking about damage to the gym floor, which is extremely expensive materials.
But the 96 wing roof, just to be clear, that's not leaking at this point in time?
No, no, the leak, as far, as far as we can figure, and this is what happens, the atrium and the 96 wing come together. And yes, it's the, we believe it's the art atrium roof that's actually the one that's doing the leaking.
Bob, what did you say the yearly payment on this is going to be?
26 for a $400,000 house.
Yeah, 20, $26 is the impact on a homeowner. The principal and interest payments are going to total $39,955 in the first year, and then it gradually ramps down for the remaining 15 years of the bond.
So do people want to take a poll or just leave things as they are?
Just the last question, I won't beat a dead horse.
It doesn't have to be the last question.
Said, we're not really sure if we're going to get a surprise and find out we can't fix the elevator. As far as like the new, or do we, you know, we're done with the one guy and we have another repair person, can they give us some clarity around, are there particular parts that they can't find, or some they can, some they can't, like?
I think Greg's properly, properly characterized the risk. Out of those project elements, we all believe either way, we're going to have to do the lighting issue. It's significant enough that it really needs to be taken care of.
I was saying that...
So in the other ones, we, we do what we've done for the last three or four years, just kind of hope that the issue doesn't get any worse, and then let you know if it gets significantly worse such that financially we're not able to buy enough pails or to take care of it. But, I mean, that, that is how they, how they partition. And that's the risk going forward without doing this or without having voter approval to take care of it. And these, these items were, the facility committee debate was, was to take all of the items that were on the larger project, and of those, what did we believe we had a responsibility to bring to your attention for consideration in the next year, knowing that we weren't going to have a, have a large project going to voters? You know, what would, what would we all think we'd take care of first in this one or two-year space where we debate what to do with bigger projects? So that's how it all ended up there, if that helps.
Any questions? Or do people want to weigh in?
Taking the conversation or the information at face value, that these things are in fact as critical as they've been advertised, we probably don't have a lot of choice. But within saying that, there are a couple of caveats. The first being, if we present this to the electorate and it's approved, that's an automatic $40,000 added to our budget next year, and then it'll go down, but it's still a lot of money automatically added to the budget before we even talk about educational issues, quality issues. So my, the comment to the rest of the board is, as you're looking at what we're talking about now and the other facets of this conversation, it's got to come from somewhere. We can't sit here and talk about adding $211,000 over here and then $40,000 over here and whatever else. I mean, sooner or later, reality's got to impose itself. How much did our budget pass by last year? What was the vote?
I can't remember, not a, not a large margin.
I'll just leave it at that. That's something you all have to keep in mind.
Okay.
So, Mark, the urgent concerns projects, there's nothing in the 1939 building that's going to...
No.
...potentially pop up that's urgent, which is...
Well, that's...
You know, I mean, like, well, you know.
Yes.
There's nothing that's like urgent with this building.
I think the whole building's urgent.
Yeah.
But, but these are what we consider to be the most problematic maintenance concerns.
So we're all up to code with the mechanical system here, the venting, the kitchen, the electrical system, you know, enough to get...
I'm an attorney and I won't answer that question.
So, yeah, like, you know, a certificate of occupancy or whatever for this next year. So there's nothing that's...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, it's like, no, there's no danger of, there could be.
There could be, sure, of course, there always could be, but this is what we consider to be...
Yeah, so when you were looking at it...
Yeah.
This seemed okay.
So these are chronic?
The next year.
And the ones for the bond are acute?
Yeah, yeah, got it, okay.
All right, Eric or Susan, your feeling on the bond?
You know, if they're necessary for health and safety or code, it's kind of hard to argue with them.
Yeah, and that, we have to do the elevator. I mean, it seems, I think that would be a huge problem, so. Yeah, I'm okay with the bond.
Okay. So maybe we...
Mark, when the quilteria arises, attorneys are always the first to get it.
I know it.
So I think maybe what we can be doing is thinking about how we can best present the reasons why we as a board think these are critical concerns that are, that need to be addressed through the bond. And I don't know if the facility committee is meeting, but we have some time to think about that before our January 16th meeting.
I would like to have a conversation directly with the architect. I don't know how the rest of you feel about that, but however that goes, this conversation really needs to continue a piece of the budget discussion. And we need to have, really, that, the answer to that in mind before we approve a budget.
Meaning the 1939 part?
Anywhere.
The 1939 building part you're talking about?
No, the whole thing.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, 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 yeah.
Is there another, when's the next facilities?
Actually, I don't know if we have one on the books right now.
We do have one in January. After, we'd have to double check to see if it's before or...
Yeah.
Okay. And maybe you can check to see if we're or Ronnie are available. And then maybe, Claude, you could just attend that meeting?
Yeah, Lee and/or Ronnie will be attending that next meeting.
Okay, great. All right, 4.2, budget work session. 4.2.1, update on relevant financial information.
Starting at the top, your healthcare provider has committed to healthcare premiums for the 15, 16 budget year. And as a result, for both health and dental, we're taking down your budget with a change sheet of $35,025, the largest portion of that being the adjustment from what you budgeted at 10% in healthcare to a 4.5% that they committed to. The next segment, I include your fund balance info for your consideration as you get towards the end of the process and debate whether you're going to apply some fund balance as next year revenue to lower taxes to homeowners.
And what's the recommended amount, Bob, that you would recommend?
It's somewhat flexible. The neighborhood of $300,000 is what boards, other boards kind of have in their mind. The guidance we give you on use of fund balance is if you insert it a large sum this year and can't come close to that large sum next year, it feels like a budget increase. Do you know what I mean? So if you put in $100,000 of revenue to help the situation this year and you don't have $100,000 next year, you're just, you're just kind of deferring the pain for here. So we, we recommend that you, kind of whatever you do with fund balance, you ramp up or ramp down so that it's not a dramatic shift. You've got favorable balance in fund balance and likely what Greg and I and Audrey are anticipating is you'll finish this year putting money into fund balance as well. That's what the $180,000 is that was part of your financial management review for last With the current year financial performance, we recommend boards don't spend that number until after the year has finished. But with the two put together, say you have an opportunity to, to have a conversation about using fund balance to help this year, and you've not had that platform or capability for a conversation the last three or four years. So that's good news. Okay, on fund balance and current year, we talked about the bond voted article of $26 per $400,000 home. And the last set of numbers that you should be aware of are relative to your property tax calculation. Three numbers enter in to that calculation. The first is your equalized pupil count. It has dropped from 421 to 404, which is a 3.93% decrease in equalized pupil count, which feels like in the calculation, an increase to your property taxes, since property taxes are based on per pupil. And for those of you who remember back to the enrollment projections, I'll remind you that those two numbers are equalized pupil... numbers are equalized pupil calculated by the state, looking out the back window at the last two years and averaging them. So it's, it might not exactly reconcile with your sense of where enrollment is this year and next. The statewide tax rate has been recommended by the commissioner to go up 2 cents year to year. That feels like a 2% increase in taxes. And the statewide base amount has the reverse effect. When it increases, it lowers your tax rate. And those two have a sense of offsetting each other, if you will. So those are Mary Peterson's recommendations to the legislature. As you all well know, there's a lot that can happen between her issuing the letter in December and the legislature leaving session in May. They may or may not be close to those numbers when we finish. But there's, that's what we use in your budgeting process. We don't know yet your common level of appraisal, which could affect the whole calculations as well.
If the ceiling was favorable last year, does that make it more or less likely that it's...
If what was?
It was favorable. It was, it was a good...
You got good news?
We got into good news last year. Is it likely that, that would, or is it more likely that we would get bad news?
I'm not really good at predicting that, with the tools I have in front of me.
The trend has been favorable each of the last four years. So I don't know if there's any predictive value in that, but it was just...
All right. So with the, do we have any, or when will we have information about how all this works its way into the actual number?
Well, I would circle the 3.93% increase on enrollment, or in equalized pupil count. And then you know that your budget right now at baseline is at what? I know I should know that off the top.
3.77.
3.77. Those two numbers circled lead you, would lead one to believe that your tax rates, if nothing changes from what we've said, are going to go up 6%, 7% as a result of those two numbers.
And each percent is...
70,000.
$77,000.
So Bob, as far as the baseline budget goes, you've detailed the change based on the healthcare and dental numbers, right? So the $35,000, that's how much is coming off the baseline budget?
Yes, that's on your change sheet. And when we go from baseline to your adjusted budget, after you've discussed and are made aware of any budget changes in decision packets, all of those will get rolled in. The numbers I just gave you don't include any of those adjustments.
Right. So I'm just, I mean, we haven't updated the website in terms of, like, this, the numbers are all the same numbers that we looked at last year?
Yes, we haven't changed your, the only budget we're working with is your baseline budget.
Okay. And so we know it's going to be $35,000 better based on this healthcare piece.
Correct.
Are there other, any other changes?
Yes, I believe Greg has discussed with you a couple of times the changes to technology that are taking out $50,000 in change.
$50,400 was in the baseline, wasn't meant to be.
So that's another reduction. And then Cindy, I'm aware of, has another reduction in the neighborhood of...
14.5.
14.5 that helps as well.
And that's from?
In personnel.
Adjustment we uncovered between baseline and today that needed to be made to bring it correct.
Okay. And can I ask just one other thing? The, I don't, it's, I mean, if this is, it's a better time to talk about this, but the heating, the fuel oil, has that changed in light of what's gone on in price of oil the last month?
The picture has changed dramatically. It's worthy of Greg and Dave to make sure that the number they have in the budget for next year is prudently set. But, but I know we're riding a low point right now. And I'm not sure that anybody's forecasted for me in a, in a basis I'm willing to ride, that that's going to hold itself all the way through next year. But it's, it's worth looking at and make sure that, as you said, the number we've got for fuel oil next year is appropriate for us to have at this point in time.
Greg, so I think the last two years were, were very consistent, right? It was $89,000 this year and last. And I think we budgeted 94, 95.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, obviously, we don't know what the weather's going to be, but, you know, price oil is down 40%. Are there, is there the ability to, I mean, besides the obvious, which is, it's not going to probably go back up for, you know, recover that entire loss. So we're likely to spend less, you know, given what take the weather. But is there a way to lock in that with a provider?
You, you can, you can do that. The time to decide that you're going to lock in is about in the May timeframe, when you place your fuel oil out to bid. And years past, when you've done that, you've chosen to, I don't know how far down the stuff you want to get into, you've chosen to buy oil based on the price that it comes off the car in Albany or Montreal, and then put, put out to bid the differential to get the oil from there to here. So that you're, whatever the market moves, you're going to get credit for, but you're also going to take the risk. You can flip that around and say, I want to buy 80,000 gallons of oil delivered in this calendar year, and I want to price firm. It's, it's, it all depends on how you want to play the game. If you had done that last May, you would have been regretting it today.
For sure.
That's, that's just the way it goes. We have that option, or you all do, in the May timeframe. But to your point, I think it's worthy of at least a conversation amongst the four of us about, do we, do we recommend taking advantage of the 20% drop in fuel oil prices between September and now in our budgeting for next year?
Yeah. So I think it's been at least that, and it, you know, given that we're not really, you know, based on your numbers, sort of, with our backs up against the wall in terms of if we, you know, we've got the, what will end up being 620,000 of fund balance.
Yeah.
You know, I'd say something closer to market prices. And if you're off by a few grand, we obviously have the capacity to cover that.
Kristin, that's all I have. We can go into decision packets if you'd like.
Are there any questions for Rob before that? All right, decision packets.
So probably should bring your attention to some minor changes in comparison to what you saw last meeting. So on the technology sheet, the number 38886 at the top of the page is slightly higher. The previous number is 38056, and that is just to allow for some interest on a lease for a server that didn't get rolled into that number. So the $16,000 number hasn't changed. The $5,000 number was incorrect. That should have been 7,500. That, these are all numbers that are in the baseline. And the number for supplies should have been 8,500. It was 8,000. So all you, your sheet tonight reflects all those correct numbers, and all those numbers are reflected in the baseline. The previous subtotal there in the middle of the page was 67,000. Now it's 70,886. The decision packets on that page have not changed at all since the last meeting, and they still subtotal 34,450. The total for the whole page, which I believe, is it cut off on yours, or can you see it? It's cut off. I'm sorry about that. The total for the whole page is 105,336.
The, you mentioned the interest on the lease. Is that the AP, sorry, the HP Financial Services?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
There are no other changes.
And...
There's no other changes to the decision packets?
No other changes to the decision packets. We have provided more detail.
Sir, the, is that interest and principal that gets into this line item?
Yes. Am I getting that right, Bob?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. The reason it was missed is because it lived on another line. So that one was...
I saw it in the long term, but it wasn't in that, yeah.
Yeah. We had the principal included, and we didn't have the interest, and we thought we ought to be treating them both the same.
Just look at the money person on the floor.
So the only other addition to this information is more detail around, you have a sheet that looks like this, which is something Audrey and I put together, provide a little more detail around the rationale for the behavior specialist position. I know if the board wanted to take a few minutes to, to look at that. No, no, Mike would not be a supervisor. This position would be supervised by either Audrey or me.
Okay.
So it's, it's not the same position, but they would be working in collaboration with, with Mike, our school counselors, Audrey and I, special educators, classroom teachers, obviously.
So, I'm sorry, can you clarify? CCS has fewer FTEs that support student behavior than all the CSSU Kates. Can you just sort of dig a little deeper into that one? Because I know we spent some time at the CSSU board level going over staff to student ratios. So I'm just trying to make sense of that, because I thought we had one of the lowest student to staff ratios, or high staff to student as it relates to...
The whole building?
Special ed pairs. Is that something different than what you're describing here?
Yes, we're not talking about special education pairs. We're not talking about pairs in general. We're talking about positions like planning room director, or planning room facilitator, or behavior specialist. So it gets, it gets a little tricky to do apples and apples, because every building is configured a little bit differently. We're the only school building without a social worker. Now, a social worker doesn't directly support, you know, interact with student behavior, but they support students and families. That are, that could be high risk. We also, so if you took, let's say, the closest comparison to us, which would be Heinsberg, they have 2.0 behavior positions similar to this one, as well as a social worker, where we have one. All of the other buildings have additional staff, but they have more students as well.
When you said whereas we have one, you mean Mike DiNicolas?
Yes.
A planning room facilitator, or...
Yes.
And what's his background as far as, you know, as a behavioral specialist? You know, it's the position that you're proposing, if they're going to be, because it says down here, planning room facilitator. So Mike's the planning room facilitator right now.
Yep.
And so then is his background on par with the behavioral specialist?
No. This behavioral specialist will have more specialist back, more specialty background around things like applied behavioral analysis, FBAs. So there, there are things that this person, we anticipate, would be trained in and have in their toolkit that aren't necessarily in Mike's credentials.
What's FBAs?
Functional behavior assessments.
Thanks.
Can you explain a little bit how this individual would, would sort of support, or interact with, like, with the tier two and tier three type kids?
Yep.
Well, they could manage if a student, be the case manager for the student, do the check-in and check-outs for the student, and facilitate any meetings, do the data analysis, come to the team meeting and help support that student that way. So more specified piece than what Mike is currently doing.
And so, and who's doing it now? Just Mike, or?
Well, we're all doing pieces of it, and our school counselors.
We smile, because it really is a, is a by-committee type of arrangement. We all chip in as members of the support teams for those kids, and, you know, try to meet the children's needs the best we can. But as we alluded to at the last meeting, we've started to notice that it, it impacts other things in terms of the delivery of some, you know, what we want to do is be in front of behavior, and be really focused on proactive instruction and support, so you're not, so we're not reacting as much.
Does it bear upon any of the workload of, of special ed para-staff?
The para-staff? They're part of the team, but they wouldn't be doing some of this work.
Right. It could, what it could do is it could support para-educators, some para-educators collect data. So it could support para-educators who collect data around students. It could support, be it para-educators and classroom teachers around consult, you know, coaching and consulting around interventions with children. So it would, it would support para-educators as it would classroom teachers and students.
Does it go as far as having any impact on the configuration of the para-staff or the, the number? Or could it even just kind of help us out with, like, it seems like all the other schools in the district, students to specialized paras run about four to one. Charlotte, it's like two to one. And that may be, we have a different population of kids on special ed plans. I, you know, I don't know if this helps address that at all.
It could. We don't know if it would impact the ratio of, impact the number of para-educators we have in the school. It could impact that.
Yeah, I would, I would see that more impacting, you know, if we have general ed paras now in fifth grade, that maybe that could be something that you wouldn't need even with larger class sizes if you had that. Whereas special ed, it's just, it's part of the kid's service plan.
I'm just curious if I could get to a difference. I mean, maybe this is a different discussion. It just came up in the last CSSU presentation about special ed staffing ratios. And, you know, it might not have been the form to drill really deep with Megan Roy, but I thought maybe if our administration wanted to explain it for me.
And just to remind the board, we're not talking about students who are just in the tier three realm. We're talking about supporting student behavior. And there are also students that exhibit and require what we would consider tier three support, meaning a student that requires intensive adult support, a student that requires really intricate plans and daily data collection. That's tier three support, but they might not yet, or may for some, for some reason, might not be eligible for special education. So, but, but for all intents and purposes, resources-wise, are tier three student around behavior.
I don't, I don't think that answered you, but I, if you could explain your, your question better, because I just see, like, the special ed plan is, you know, at the supervise reunion, and I'm not sure if, like, the number of paras to kids we have here is any more really a function of, you know, how we do things here.
I was just curious, because it was the one outlier. There's, everything was consistent, and all the other schools were pretty much in the same ballpark.
So that's not information we've seen yet, so. So that's not information we've seen yet, so.
I guess just, I was trying to get some context to put this higher in, you know, because it seemed like in other parts of that support infrastructure, we were very well-staffed relative to our peers. And so I just didn't know how to interpret this, this need.
All right. So do we want to stick with that one, or should we go through the decision packets? I'd rather just go through in the order. So if we can start with the budget reductions, for those of you who have the, hand out, it's page two. Are there questions or comments from the board about any of the proposed reductions? And is the asterisk still, the asterisk is still a question mark?
It's subject to change.
I guess one of my questions is, you know, we are reducing, if we are adding the health educator, you know, we're reducing here, school counselor, or the connected youth, et cetera. I'm trying to figure out how, if we did something like hire the behavior specialist, how that's not going to cause a reduction in the planning room coordinator's job now. I'm just trying to figure out why it's not considered redundant, you know, that there wouldn't be a reduction in that full-time position. Because adding a whole new hire sounds-
Right. What we're, what we're saying is that we're under-resourced, given the demands of the, that we're seeing. And that's impacting, that's putting strains on the system that we don't want to see continue that are impacting supporting positive behavior across the school. So we don't see it as a redundancy. We see it as putting a piece there that, that should be there, it's missing.
So, real quick, we're not changing the level of language instruction, are we? It's just that we don't, we just don't need that?
We don't need that.
Okay.
Any other questions on the reductions? All right, moving on to the next, the heftier additions packet. I don't know, what's the board's pleasure? Should we go through them in order? Is there a desire to ask about prioritization by administration, or what makes sense to people?
Well, why don't we go, maybe do the first three, and then I'd like to sort of prioritize the technology part, if that's possible.
Is that good with everyone? All right. Add point four licensed health educator, 25,000. Or do people want specific information about those two, about these top three? Does anyone need more information about the health educator? All right. Behavior specialist, which we just had that conversation, and non-intensive classroom para educator for general kindergarten support, two numbers. One, if they recommend, two, if we have enrollment of 38 or higher, and one para educator for 26, 7, 78 if one of the classrooms has 19 and one has 18. Are there questions or comments about this one?
What's the current enrollment in kindergarten?
Just today, we went to 36.
Just remind me, what was the, Bill Smith protection? Is that his name?
It was, yeah, Bill Smith. I would have to go back and look, I don't have it with me, Eric, but I believe it's low 30s. And the NASDAQ number is 40.
All right. Does the board want to just keep going, or do we want to talk about how we think we're going to come down on these? We're not voting on anything till next time, but the time gets short to do all these computations and try to figure out.
What, is that what you're trying to do?
I'm asking the board as a whole.
Well, let's keep going through, yeah, let's do the technology part.
All right. Technology, 15,000 for 40 Chromebooks for four through eight. Do people have questions? Greg and Audrey gave a presentation last time about why they want additional, both hardware, software, infrastructure. Are there questions for them on that technology piece?
I'd like to know, I'd like it prioritized, if possible.
Yeah. One thing that's a little different, I'd say, about these technology decision packets is that, and Eric brought up the point last meeting about, you know, what pieces are covered in the baseline portion of the tech budget. So the piece around these technology decision packets, I feel like, so if the board decided to take out $15,000, what I would like to do is to go back to the tech steering committee and say, we have $15,000 less. How are we going to deploy those resources differently? As opposed to say, okay, we're going to definitely buy 40 fewer Chromebooks. Just learning from what we learned last year about how technology's changing, and knowing what we're knowing about how we really want to deploy and be as flexible as possible, I asked the board to look at these numbers a little differently in terms of more along the lines of numbers, and less along the lines of what, we can certainly give you justification for all of these items. And, but what I would rather do is be able to go back to the technology committee and say, we have this much less than we had wanted, or let's, let's discuss again how we're going to deploy and use the funds we have.
Other questions on technology?
What was the final answer that you gave us the last time about the total number at one place or another in this budget of Chromebooks that you're buying?
With the decision packets or without the decision packets?
With.
With the decision packets, we'd be buying 110 additional Chromebooks.
Any other questions? All right, science supplies.
Can I ask you a quick question? Does that, Greg, you know, just looking forward to, you know, future budgets, are there, are there other, does this get us kind of caught up in a way on those devices? So next year, we wouldn't expect like an extra decision packet? Like the 38 grand kind of baseline would accommodate, would you be on a path that that's going to be sort of, you know, this kind of catches you up to where you need to be, or?
It's going to put us in a much better position. I hesitate to go too far, too far beyond that because of the way the field changes, but in terms of our device to student ratio, we'll be, we'll have made some ground based on last year, what we've done this fiscal year, and based on the proposal for next fiscal year. We'll still want to increase that ratio, and we'll still want to add iPads, but this will put us in a better position. We won't, I would imagine that we'd have a reduced number of decision packets, a smaller number.
And then just, I probably asked this last week, forgive me if I forgot, the 40 Chromebook line item, is there, is there other infrastructure in there as well? Like, is it carts, or is it something?
Yes. Yep. So a storage cart for 20 Chromebooks runs around a thousand bucks. They're not cheap. Chromebooks are priced, these are $325.
Yeah, I figured that from the 10.
Yeah.
Pretty quick.
All right, science supplies and materials to support science action plan, $4,500. Questions on that? Four wins 3,500. Initial installment to begin annual contribution to the construction fund of 25,000. And we've discussed this at previous meetings. Do people have questions about this recommendation? It's very quiet.
I have a question, Bob. You know, when we come up with sort of that fund balance, and I remember the breakdown of this year's, but when we, I can't remember, or I don't, I never knew for previous years. Do we know like how much that might have come out of, like, O and M that we didn't spend?
I'd have to, I don't have that recalled in a manner to respond. I could go back through and look at, you know, kind of the years where it accumulated and what was underrunning in that given year, but I don't off the top of my head.
And can you remind us how, with the fund balance, when we decide how much we want to apply to as revenue, we have to put that as an article? Do we put that as a separate article?
Yes. You have, by tradition, gotten voter approval on full disposition of your fund balance each year, and you typically have the choice of, A, applying it as revenue, B, holding it for revenue for future years, which you've done the last two years, or C, allocating money that's in fund balance to a specific construction project. And I don't, can't recall that you've done that, but other boards might have. So those are your three options, but we recommend that you fully disposition fund balance and get voter approval for that article.
So how does that work then? And I feel stupid, I don't know this, but, so when we have our budget that we finalize and present, are we assuming we're getting voter approval for that revenue amount?
No. You, you, the articles you present to voters are the article for the general fund budget expenditures, the millions of dollars or whatever, just the expenditures.
Right.
And then another article would read, shall voters approve applying $100,000 of current fund balance as revenue for the 15, 16-year, and hold the balance of fund balance in as revenue for future years, is sort of how the article might be worded, if you use the $100,000.
So then it would be our, our job to inform the taxpayers that if you approve this, it has this positive effect on your tax rate?
Yeah, I've not seen a fund balance article get defeated by voters.
Right, but if we're trying to sell a budget and say, your taxes are likely to be however much for a $400,000 house, if we assume that we're going to get that revenue, it's less.
Yeah, we should clarify for them what you're doing.
Thanks, I'm sorry. I don't know why I didn't know that.
Yep.
I'm sorry, are there, are there any questions on the $25,000 for construction? $9,000 to install a system for school-to-bus communication. Are there questions on that one?
I should just let the board know that there is still investigation going on there. I've got a conversation going with Chris, Chief Davis from the fire department, as well as Brian Hemingway, Hemenway from Betscha, to see if there's a way to accomplish what we want to accomplish with less expense. So that, those are still some technical things we're working out. The $9,000 would be probably the most expensive scenario.
Thank you. And $10,000 to install security cameras to monitor school grounds. Are there any additional questions on that one? All right. So what is the will of the board? Do we want to hear comments from the audience? Do you want to weigh in on what we're likely going to look for in a budget in January? So does anyone have any comments or questions about the proposed decreases or increases to the baseline budget? Sure. Can you stand up, can you just say your name again?
Bonnie Christie. I'm just wondering about the $9,000 for the bus communication system. It seems when my kids were riding the bus that there was like radio communication or something. If there was an issue, the school could talk to the bus and the bus could talk to the school. Is that no longer the case?
It hasn't been the case here since, since we've arrived. Right now, we don't have any reliable way for the school to communicate with the buses. So we do it indirectly by calling Betscha Transit, and they then attempt to reach the buses.
Okay. And the, the security cameras? Is there something new and different with vandalism that you need security cameras now?
Do you want me to respond to that?
We shouldn't make you. It's so nice when you do. I think the concerns of administration is increased vandalism, kids getting up on the roofs. We had a lot of issues with people driving and otherwise behaving badly back on the fields. Some of that's been ameliorated by the additional installation of posts, but it still doesn't completely prevent vehicles from getting back there. So the cameras would provide, you know, some useful information if we are experiencing vandalism, and maybe would help save the life of these roofs if we can keep people off them. Is that accurate? Are there other questions or comments about any of the administration's proposals?
Can I ask a question about the school-to-bus communication again? I asked questions about this last time. So on Thursday morning, when there was the delay of 10, 15 minutes and you had to send out the voicemail to everybody, how did you know about the delay of the buses? So was it something that Betscha called?
So, yeah. Betscha tried to call, reach the school. There wasn't anyone at the schools. Betscha reached, ended up reaching me on my cell phone. I was en route to school. So we were, due to the weather, there were, we were short-staffed here to manage that Alert Now system. So we had a couple of good takeaways from that, from that event in terms of system redundancies. But to answer your question, Betscha ended up getting a hold of me via my cell phone.
So how did they know what was happening on the buses?
The buses can communicate to Betscha. So the buses have radios that can communicate to Betscha dispatch, but they don't have a way to communicate to us unless Betscha calls us.
So if there's an emergency on the bus, the bus will call Betscha and Betscha will call us. So we kind of do have something?
Yes.
So?
Yes.
And if no one's in the office, that's their next line is to call the cell phone of an administrator? That's the protocol right now? All right. Monica, can you say your name for the camera?
Monica Marshall. Susan started asking the question earlier. It's about the behavioral specialist. We're reducing the counselor by point one, but then we're adding another position. So how is Mike DiNicolas, if he's, this behavior specialist isn't replacing him? So how do the two counselors and now the two specialists all going to work? Like, I don't understand why we're reducing the counselors by adding another position. How are they all differentiated? And how is Mike DiNicolas, what's his background, and why are we hiring somebody that has a better background and not hiring somebody with a better background originally? I guess is my question. I don't understand why now we're having four people helping out 400 kids.
I can just share the reason for the reduction in the school counselors. Currently, the school counselors are teaching our health education curriculum, and by adding the health educator, we don't need their support to teach that anymore, those standards.
So they could go back and-
They can do school counseling pieces.
Right.
Right.
So you're not reducing them. So you're not reducing them?
When you, I'm not reducing them?
The guidance counselor. They're gonna, is Kathy Batty gonna go back full time or if she was full time, what is, what does she do that's different than what the behavioral specialists would do? Like, how are they different?
She's been currently, she currently, and she's a point eight FTE, she's not full time.
Right.
She currently, a majority of her school counseling piece, or a large piece of it, is teaching the health curriculum standards for sixth through eighth grade right now. And that's really, she's not really licensed for that field to do that. So by pulling her away, she can actually do the things she should be doing as a school counselor, teaching school guidance pieces, world of difference, as well as supporting some of the behavior. But her role is not to, she's part of the team, but is not to do behavior specialist pieces.
So then you're saying there's so much behavioral problems, we need two, Mike D. Nicola and this?
Yes, as Greg said earlier. We are feeling understaffed.
So there's, there is bullying in the school then?
Bullying?
Yeah. Because if Mike is so overwhelmed that you need another person to come in, then, I mean, that's a significant amount of money. So I is that why you're bringing somebody in?
Yeah, what we're saying is that we don't think the resources that we have in the building right now match the demands on the system. That's what we're saying. I don't think we mentioned bullying.
Well, it's not because they're good kids.
Are there other questions or comments? Sure, Bonnie.
Everyone. On, on the total technology budget, one hundred and five thousand, three thirty-six, is that right? With decision packages? And then the others? Is that, is that the right number?
The decision packets and the baseline would equal one hundred and five thousand.
Yeah. So on a, on a year-to-year basis, what are we looking at for technology? Is this like every year we look at this, these kinds of numbers? Or is this because there's a big investment in Chromebooks and iPads and goes along with that?
Right.
And is this a hundred and five thousand dollars that ten or twelve years ago we, we didn't have to spend because we just didn't do a lot of technology? And it's an ongoing cost that we have to assume now?
Tough to speak, you know, the ten numbers are so, would be so different. Ten, for a hundred thousand dollars ten years ago, you know, who, who knows what we'd be able to get? And if they'd be able to, those devices would be able to fit in this room, that's probably an exaggeration, but. So to answer your question, if you look at the last two years, last year we spent one hundred and twenty-one thousand. The year before, we spent seventy-one thousand. Next year, to reinforce what, the answer to Eric's question is that I would expect that we would be coming to the board with less, asking for less than a hundred and five thousand dollars?
So the reason the school buses a lot, the school budget is a lot is not because we have two principals. Which is what goes around front porch for them. I mean, there are other things, right?
Yes. And part of the, the technology piece, I mean, it's just at least in my opinion, it just, you know, the in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, we have to be educating our kids in a way that's preparing them for the future and it's not a you know, it's not just a word processor for them. It's not just a fun tool. They have to learn how to integrate technology in their lives or they're, they'll get to see you behind. And we have the additional thing that the new standardized testing requires the students to take the test on a computer. So we have those two things sort of coming together and I don't know that the board will approve all of the requests to technology additions, but I think that's sort of the, the reason why we're seeing that uptick again this year. Although I guess it's really a decrease from the current budget.
It's a big chunk. It would probably be helpful to communicate that in some way to the community because I don't think people realize that that's just part of the cost and the way of educating our students now. And when the uptick in, oh, two principals, we've got to stop this. Everybody's just missing the point. And then school budgets go down for the wrong reasons. So I just think the more that you can communicate why there are big numbers there, where the big numbers are coming from and why they're important is just helpful to the community and to the school in the long run.
Thank you.
Well, our technology, I guess, quick question, did the, sort of baseline software budget seems pretty constant over time? I presume they're just licenses that get renewed every year or?
So that's something that, that's something that I do anticipate we would need to adjust the baseline for next year. Because that's, as I said at the last meeting, we've been seeing a steady increase in the amount we're spending on instructional and non-instructional software because we're using technology more. So we've got more licenses and subscriptions to, to keep up with and manage.
Greg, the Chromebooks that are baked into the baseline budget, where do you anticipate those are going to be distributed?
Well, assuming that everything is approved, those would be
No, no, the ones baked into the baseline.
Right, but what I mean is that deter-
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure, sure.
So assuming everything were to be approved, those would be upstairs.
Okay, and if everything wasn't approved?
Then we would look at every, all the devices we can buy with the money we have and figure out where we want to put them.
Anything else from the audience? Any questions or comments? All right, feel free to jump in if anyone changes their mind. So does the board want to go through and sort of give a rough idea of what, of how we might come out when we're voting next time? Or I think it's helpful to sort of allow them to firm up the numbers and then we can have a better idea on the sixteenth of, you know, what the likely tax rate will be to the taxpayers and this isn't, I think if we discuss that, we're not bound by what we say tonight. But it can help us, I think, arrive at some numbers that are more instructive next time. Is that good? All right. Does anyone want, not want to take advantage of any of the proposed budget reductions?
Well, some of those are contingent on the decision packets, oh, additions.
Okay, so do you want to wait for that? He said some of these might be contingent on whether or not we approve other things here. So I guess we can start with the decision packets first. How are people feeling about the point four licensed health educators? Head educator?
So that generates the first two line items.
I'm sorry, what?
So that.
Right.
So it's sort of a net seventy thousand.
So we could, we could speak of those three together if that's what people want? Anyone want to weigh in?
It just sounds expensive, the health educator. For some reason, for, you know, point four, they're twenty-five thousand dollars.
And Cindy, Cindy can explain that.
Well, first of all, you're talking about an additional tenth of a person. You have point three on the first page and point four. You have a point three reduction and a point four add, so there's an additional FTE, so that's part of the difference. This position would also be paid off of the teacher scale, whereas the SAP counselors are not. So there's a difference in the salary there.
So, so paid off the teacher scale, are they are they union or are they just indexed to union wages?
I'm sorry?
Are they members of the union or are they just?
All licensed teaching positions are covered by the collective bargaining agreement.
And because it's not full time, there's no, we don't pay any benefits.
In this instance, the FTE is below the threshold for benefits. And that's, we budget, assuming somebody with a master's degree and ten years' experience, we could go either way depending on the applicant pool.
So is there any way to do point two of a health educator? Like, one day?
We wouldn't be able to provide all, all the, the grade levels.
So it's, it's, it's an increase of six thousand dollars. Is that right? If we take those other two reductions?
Yes.
Or six thousand twenty-one? All right, Clyde?
Well, it's difficult to discuss these things individually. My three favorite phrases have become what's best for kids. Twenty-first century education and preparing our kids for the future. With the implication that if we don't do these things, disaster is going to ensue. The problem is there's no substantiation for the fact that any of the stuff that we do does those things. Because the footing underneath educational philosophy is continually changing. This is a rhetorical question, Greg, you don't really have to answer it, but I'd be interested to hear the end of the world scenario that would be proposed if we did none of these things, if we took out these reductions and did not add the two hundred and eleven thousand dollars in the decision packets. In simple terms, my answer to the question is the first four items in decision packets is no. I would leave, I would not probably do the reductions that are on the previous page, with the possible exception of the world language. The other things that are in the decision packets, a hundred and ten Chromebooks seems like a lot. I don't doubt that they'd all be used, but we haven't established that end of the world scenario if we don't get them. Science supplies and materials, of course. Network infrastructure, I'll take your word for the fact that it's necessary. I'm going to skip for the moment the initial installment for the construction fund. The school bus communications and the security cameras, perhaps. The security cameras are a bigger question mark for me than the school bus communication. The initial installment to the construction fund, if we're going to ask for a bond for four hundred and nine thousand dollars, we are essentially going to contribute thirty-nine thousand dollars right off the bat the first year to a construction fund. It may not be the one that we're talking about, but it's still that contribution. So net, we're talking about sixty-five thousand dollars for construction and maintenance and repair. It sort of suggests an open-ended approach, an undefined approach. Maybe one year we'd need the twenty-five K, maybe one year that would not be enough. Maybe it would take ten years to add up enough at twenty-five thousand a year to do whatever it is we need to do. So I'm ambiguous about that one.
Florence?
Yes.
Christian? If I might just clarify, the bond that, for the four hundred and nine thousand would have no principal payment in the first year, so the the year that the school would actually see the thirty-five thousand dollars is the following year, not fifteen, sixteen. The way you go out to market, get the bond and then have to begin paying it off. And so it's just a timing clarification. You're, you're right with everything else.
Thank you. All right, anyone else want to weigh in?
I guess it's my turn. I don't have a huge problem with the health educator to the extent that you know, the net cost isn't huge and if we're convinced that that's a more effective way to deliver that, you know, for more or less the same cost, I don't have a huge problem. The behavior specialist, I guess I still don't, I can't quite get my arms around what the need is. You know, in terms of, maybe I'm just, I have a hard time with the whole MTSS thing, but I, I can't figure out who does what and where the holes are and whether or not this potentially generates other efficiencies and savings down the line for some of the other you know, people that we're relying on to do that today. So I'm skeptical on that one, but I, I need more information. Kindergarten thing, I don't think I budget for it. I mean, the guy who's been doing the projections for a lot longer seems to be comfortably below the threshold. So it seems kind of speculative to budget for that. Technology, I'm again, you know, I'm I guess kind of like Clyde, I, I, in principle, I'm all for prioritizing technology and spending what we need to spend. And the question is, is, you know, is this, are we do we have a deficit with the Chromebooks where this is the number we need? Pronto, is it something that we could be more deliberate about? You know, if we do it this year, are we going to hopefully count on, on not having to do it again next year? I, you know, it seems like a number that would make a material change given the size of the school. So I, I guess I'd be I, I lean towards wanting to support technology, I just want to make sure that that's a all of it's a genuine need, you know, iPads, we didn't really get to those. Maybe understand how that, you know, how crucial that piece is. And then the rest of it, I guess I kind of have the same question about the the twenty-five thousand for the construction fund. Not a lot of transparency in terms of, and again, I haven't been at this long enough to know where O and M shakes out every year, but you know, do we forego routine maintenance? Do we constantly under budget for it and we're not maintaining stuff well enough? To where then all of a sudden we have these catastrophic, not catastrophic, but these sort of big bills that creep up on us? So I guess that one I don't have enough information on.
I don't think that really is supposed to be a rainy, a rainy day fund. Is that right, Mark or Bob or Greg?
Yeah.
That's, that, that way you can, if, if something beyond the O and M budget comes up, you can deal with it right away instead of having to bond. I think, you know, for transparency, it's good to put out the whole thing to bond, you know, if, if you have big projects rather than try to just cobble them together, but and twenty, twenty-five seems like a lot, but probably for this big of a school.
Yeah, I guess, O and M's already a big number, so I'm just curious if, if that is constantly sort of shoestring like underfunded every year or, or, you know what I mean? Do we, do we not keep up with routine maintenance? Or is?
I think, yeah, I think it's been, it's been a line item for years that it's one you can, it doesn't, you know, it's not pulling a teacher out of a classroom. It's, it's an area that can be shaved, I think, over time. Is that accurate?
Also, the, the things that, that we run into with O and M are the unexpected things that break, not necessarily always due to deferred maintenance, but so the lift in, the lift in this building, for example, that was eighteen thousand dollars. So
Or the water pipes.
The water pipes that break, you know, almost I don't want to say on a cycle, but every so many years. And Dave reports before we got here that where those water pipes underground are connected, they curl and pop and leak and we have to shut the water down. Those are examples, and then there are other things that, that we can't predict. So this is just from a conversation with the facilities committee around wouldn't it be nice to plan for those sort of things so that when they happen, we're not in an emergency situation? And it's to get it started so the board could decide to choose whatever number they want to do.
Yeah, you also had a four-year run of, you had favorable balance left when you completed the last construction project. You left that in the construction fund. And it kind of did exactly what Greg just described. It provided you an out to take care of. It provided you an out to take care of, you know, issues that occurred. It's been zero for some time, I think, well, since we completed the left. So, it'd help.
And I guess on the bus communication, are we going to have a better idea? You said it might be meaningfully smaller?
Yep. Literally, I've had conversations almost every day for the last three days with different people. So, if that number can be lower next time we meet, I'll have a different number. I don't expect it would go up.
And all that's left is the cameras.
Yeah, I don't, I don't feel super strongly about that. That's fine if we feel like we really need them, I guess.
All right, Susan, you're up.
So, well, the things I've already said, but, so you want me to say yes or no?
It'll be good, and then I'll do this little tally and we can give them a probably, probably not or don't know.
I do feel, you know, I just had the, an outsider sort of looking at the, you know, whole school, the number of people doing all these jobs, you know, the health educator, catered, the behavior specialist, I feel like I would say no to the health educator. I think I just want to simplify the amount of adults that the kids interact with and just, and then yes to the behavior specialist, since that seems like it's a great need. No for the parent educator and additional kindergarten support. The technology number seems really high. I'd say, you know, if we could get, I know that Greg would take the money and do different things with it, but let's just say there are 20 additional Chromebooks instead of 40 in addition to the, so the total number of 110 would go down to, we'd have, what, 90? No to the Chromebooks complete set for class, for grade two, no to the iPads for kindergarten in grade two. Yes to technology software, yes to network infrastructure, yes to science, no to Four Winds, yes to the construction fund, no to the school bus communication, and no to the security cameras.
All right, that was very superficial. All right, Mark.
Um.
And again, you know, you can all change your mind on any of this, but.
So, yes to the health educator. The behavior specialist, you know, I'd like to see numbers for what would a .5 FTE would look like. Kindergarten parent educators seem to be planning for something that's not likely to happen. I support all the technology line items and the science, obviously. I'd say yes to Four Winds. The construction fund is partly my idea. And I don't have strong feelings about the bus communication or the cameras personally.
All right.
And just to go back to Four Winds, I'm saying no to Four Winds, meaning I know the PTO has funded that, so I'd like to have the PTO continue to fund that.
Okay. So, since I put you all on the hot seat, my inclination now is to say yes to the health educator. I too, I, I hear the concerns about the increased behavior. I'm really on the fence about it. I know as compared to other schools, we have less. I hear the argument that it's impacting learning here in school. But if we could get, I know, and you provided a lot of information, but too, when we're cutting back on guidance and sort of as what Monica said, that, you know, is this a situation where we could have the guidance more robust with that filling that gap rather than have a whole new person? And maybe also, as Mark said, you know, what would it look like if, if that was a part-time position rather than full-time? So, I'm, I'm an I-don't-know. I concur that I'm willing to hedge our bets about the need for the kindergarten parents and take that out. And technology, I think I would likely, although I think this is all really great stuff, I think I would support that at a somewhat smaller amount than the full $34,500. I am mindful of the fact that I'm in support of trying to get a bond to fix the safety problems here in the school, so although I think that's really worthwhile, I'm trying to find ways of, that we can spend a little less. I would say yes to the science supplies, and if Susan, our PTO person, says we can once again beg the PTO for Four Winds money, I'll defer to Susan. I'm wondering if our initial outlay for a construction fund could be an amount less than 25, maybe a more modest 10. So, I'm a little on the fence about that amount. And I also have some ambivalence about the, sorry.
Excuse me.
Bus communications. I think it's inconvenient, the system we have now, and I personally know of situations where it would have been helpful for the school to have direct communication. Hopefully, we'll get some good news from Greg before the next meeting about that amount. And my feeling about the cameras is I'm sure it would be a great idea. I, I just don't know if, I, I don't really support it for this budget cycle and is, yeah, I guess I don't support that one. But if someone wants to donate some security cameras and all this stuff, you let us know. So, anything else on the budget? Anything come up for anyone out there? Yes, Andrew?
Kristin, I'm a little confused on maintenance, the $25,000. Is there, is there money in the budget, the underlying budget for maintenance, like the broken pipes and so forth? And then, you know, we were talking about the chronic leak in the roof over David Baird's room. I mean, do we call a roofing contractor to repair the leak or is it, are we just waiting to do the roof? So, do we have, is there, is there money in the budget for maintenance? And is this just in addition to it or is it? Because it says maintenance slash capital. I'm a little confused.
And a Bob or, can you speak to that, Bob?
The general fund operating budget for operations and maintenance does have a line in it, line in a minute for equipment and a line in a minute for repairs. I think the, the theme the committee would give you is we, we traditionally go well over that in, in taking care of maintenance issues that come up as the year progresses. So, we, we need to address that somehow, and we need to either raise the numbers in, in those line items or put more money in another fund to use when $10,000 problems occur or $15,000 problems occur. But your, your, the sense I'll give you is yes, there is money in the budget already, but it's just not enough. And relative to the roofing issues, Dave would try and take care of an issue locally, but very often with roofs, you're, you're not too far along before you call a roofer in to take care of the issue. Is that a fair way to describe it?
Yep, and we've done both.
Yeah.
We've had roofers come and fix, have done repairs, and we've had Dave do some repairs as well.
Anything else? Yes, go ahead.
I just want to speak to the Four Winds as a PTO board member present. The reason we put it in the budget every year is because we feel it's a curriculum-based program and we really don't want such a trend of curriculum-based programming being funded by the PTO. That's why the science supplies has now become also a decision packet. We just, we want to focus on enrichment, but we don't want the curriculum stuff to start falling back on the PTO, because we've had to supply technology stuff in the past, things like that. It's the big-ticket items that the PTO is not always going to have the funds for, and we came close to not having the funds for Four Winds at the beginning of the year. So, it always fluctuates with how our money comes in, so that's why we put it in there.
Back in January? All right. 5.0 consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sir, who?
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. 6.0 director's comments.
I think on the last count, there was something like 85 houses for sale in Sherlot. This is an unscientific survey, but most of them are for sale for reasons of taxation. When I said it's difficult to consider all these things individually, you've got to separate the forest from the trees, and at some point, someone's going to put down on paper the proposed budget the school board has approved. That's the number that's going to make the difference, the difference between what it was last year and what it was this year. And that's in ignorance of whatever the CLA is going to be. So, you just have to be careful. You just can't go along and approve continuous substantial raises that, as I say, are really unsubstantiated in terms of their effect. They may sound good, and I mean, there are hundreds of graduate schools of education in this country, and they're all churning out people who are reinventing the wheel and ways to improve education. At some point, local individual judgment has to play some role in how this works out. So, keep that in mind.
Eric?
Yep.
Susan? Mark? Thank you all for coming, and we'll see you here on, some point, I'll confirm next meeting. Our next meeting, our next budget meeting is January 13th at 6:00. And we don't have on the calendar, then, there's, there'd be another meeting in January, right, on the budget?
No, the January, what date was it?
13th.
13th is your final meeting. You will approve a budget, approve articles, and sign them before you leave the room on the 13th.
All right, so that's an important one to come to. And hopefully, we'll get some preliminary numbers before that to allow us to make a decision. I feel like the not, like, the timeframe is crunched a little bit more this year, because we don't have, I don't know.
You, you should feel a little different than last year. You're not doing special ed and a meeting has been taken out because of that.
Yeah, okay.
And we moved construction and operations and maintenance to your October calendar, but it is one meeting short. What, what Greg, Audrey, and I, and Cindy, and Mike will do is prepare the process by getting you a set of documents with something close to the baseline and then something close to the decision packets with the benefit of the input you just gave us.
Okay.
We'll, we'll paper those two and get them to you with the supporting change sheets and tax implications. And then it's likely, knowing you, you will not land on either of those when you finish. You will land somewhere different than that. Sandy will be here that night so that as you make decisions, we'll be able to tailor a set of documents for you to sign before you leave that evening.
Thank you.
If that's an acceptable process for you and the board.
That's great.
Okay.
And what, what's the timeframe you think that we will have? I mean, is it going to be, we get them January 12th or, or maybe it's the 13th?
I want to hedge the bets. Last night, somebody asked me that question, and, and I said, we'll get them to you a week before, not realizing that a week before is just after we get back from the, the holidays and so forth. So, I would, I would say that sometime prior to the week that you're, like, Friday of the week before.
Okay.
The, the five of us will commit to having a set of documents covering both, knowing that you're going to come here and kind of land somewhere a little different than those two, if that's acceptable.
Is it possible? I know right now, we get sort of an image of a printout of the baseline budget. It's possible just to get the actual Excel file, if there is one?
It's not in Excel.
No, we send it out as a PDF. Which, you want the function budget in Excel?
Well, if, if it were in a format where you could plug in a number and see the, you know what I mean, so instead of waiting for you to?
I'll see if we can do that.
That'd be great.
You probably only have to send that to Eric.
Yeah.
Unless anyone else wants it.
Our only hesitation is we don't want you changing it and then sending it to.
Right.
You know, Facebook or whatever and, or posting it on the web so that we've got multiple versions out there. But let me see, I'll, we'll work it out so you have one that, that has that capability.
Okay.
Okay. I have a date for the next facilities committee meeting. So, the, the facilities committee is scheduled to meet on January 15th, which is after the board meeting.
Okay. So, maybe we can talk right after about how, and Clyde wants to get some questions answered.
Can we move that up?
Okay. So, we'll talk about that right after. All right, our next regular meeting is February 17th at 7:00, and that's at CBU. The budget meeting on the 13th is here at 6 o'clock. The CSSU board meets tomorrow night. If any of you want to come to another budget meeting, it's at Central Office in Shelburne at 5:30. And there's another CSSU budget meeting there on January 7th at 5:30. The next regular CSSU board meeting is also February 17th at 5:00 at CBU.
And then, Kristin, in March, we meet the night before town meeting as a board with the public?
Yes, yes. That's our school budget meeting is the night before. I think it's 7:00.
I think so, too.
I think so. I thought Sandy would just chime right in. But, yeah, well, hopefully on our next calendar, maybe we can have that date in. All right, we're adjourned.